So it is 6:37 on Monday, March 25th, 2019. We're gonna call the school committee meeting to order and we're gonna, as the first item on our agenda, we're gonna open the public hearing for our FY '20 budget. I will actually let our superintendent do most of the talking today, but I just wanted to tell everyone that this budget planning season was actually one of the more enjoyable ones because we were talking about our strategic plan, we were talking about how we're aligning with our strategic plan in the way we were planning our expenditures. And I guess the good news at the end is that we have a balanced budget this year. So that's all I have actually for at least this round. If there are any questions, we're gonna be here. I will move myself there so I don't block the screen and I will turn it to Cheryl.
It's working. See, there he goes. Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Tonight's presentation, we're gonna go over the strategic plan very quickly, our FY '19 accomplishments, where we want to go with this FY '20 budget, our enrollment good news, our savings inefficiencies, our overall requests for new items in the budget, and then the entire request for FY '20. So we've been going over this a lot. If you've seen this before, I apologize, but the strategic plan was the result of the work of the community and the district leadership team and teachers that came together last year and put together their best thoughts of how to move the Granby Public Schools forward. We came up with four goals. They are to offer innovative and continuous learning experiences, to celebrate success and engage in the community, to focus on social, emotional, and physical well-being, and to provide resources to sustain an enriching learning environment. And so for each of those, we'd like to talk a little bit about our accomplishments this year under our new strategic plan. So in offering innovative and continuous learning experiences, we have implemented instructional leadership teams at both buildings and also at the district level. These are teams that look at student data, achievement data, and then make decisions about resources and programming and instruction, professional development, needs in the schools to really push the needle forward on student achievement. And that can be either academic achievement or social-emotional achievement. So we're looking at a whole host of data as teams in the buildings to make these decisions and that influences a large part of our discussion around the budget. We received a Project Lead the Way grant for middle school. We've implemented professional development for Chromebooks at East Meadow. With the new school, there was a huge increase in Chromebook purchase and implementation. If you were here last time, we talked about the technology audit and those, the things that we can do to move technology even more forward here in Granby. We've increased co-curricular opportunities at East Meadow and Granby Junior/Senior High School. We've revised the district-wide induction and mentoring program and that has started here this year. And we've partnered with Boston University through Project Accelerate to take online AP Physics for our Granby Junior/Senior High School students. That certainly isn't all that we've done this year, but it's an example of how we have put resources in FY '19 and aligned them to our strategic plan. In celebrating success and engaging the community, we've sustained use of social media. You should see Twitter more often, Facebook more often. The website is part of our FY '20 request, some resources around improving that. We've created a partnership with Council on Aging. We've extended community service and work-based learning partnerships. We've hosted Special Olympics and we have reinstated Student of the Month here at Granby Junior/Senior High School. And in fact, we've had 12 students named to UMass Honor Roll, Honor Band, sorry. So these are just some examples of the ways that we're engaging with the community and we're always looking for more, so if anybody has any ideas. One of the things we did this year was to use the All Town All Call and that's been successful in bringing folks to the first budget, our first budget presentation two weeks ago and hopefully maybe that's why you're here, 'cause you got an all call. Our third goal is to focus on social, emotional, and physical well-being. That has been a huge part of our effort and the school committee's effort over the last three years. This year, we've implemented the Mind Up Pilot. We've implemented mindfulness and self-care pilot. We will be implementing mindfulness and self-care pre-K through 12 next year. So that is an amazing step for us and really the extension of our work with Peace Builders as culture and climate. But mindfulness and self-care is how we care for ourselves as staff, but also how we teach kids to care for themselves as they move through their time here with us in Granby. We created the SEL program here at East Meadow and that is for social-emotional learning students who are in need of more support there. We created a unified basketball team, which is aligned to our Special Olympics. As a matter of fact, we're going tomorrow to the... Right, to celebrate this work. I think we're getting like an award or something. The Department of Developmental Disabilities, so. We've implemented staff yoga, both at Granby Junior/Senior High School and at East Meadow. And we've partnered with the Quabin Mediation to provide active bystander training to our students and that aligns with our Peace Builders curriculum. And so students are receiving training on how to be an active bystander and intervene safely and bring any situations forward to the adults in their building. And then finally, a few examples of the proper resources to sustain the best possible learning environment. We've purchased safety equipment using a joint Department of Justice grant application with the Granby Police Department. We're extending that in FY '20 and hopefully we will get another round of that funding. This year, it purchased more cameras for Granby Junior/Senior High School so we can have full coverage of every part of Granby Junior/Senior High School. At Granby Junior/Senior High School, the middle school team time was added back into the schedule, which is important. That allows staff to co-plan at the middle school level, to intervene when students are having difficulties and to reach out to our community partners to bring in wraparound support services for our students as needed. We implemented Project Lead the Way, the design and modeling class for grades seven and eight, and we've secured funding for automation robotics and the science of technology course, which will be implemented next year. So we're very excited about these accomplishments. Any questions? It's all good news tonight. Yes?
What grades have access to computers from land to land?
So, great question. We have right now what we call a one-to-one program for grades three through six. So when students enter East Meadow, if they are in grades three through six in their homeroom, they receive a laptop, a Chromebook that goes throughout the building with them and then at the end of the day, they put it in, it charges overnight, so they're ready, it's ready for them when they come back. You will hear us talk about implementing that same program in seven and eight in the FY '20 request. In addition, the technology audit that we received suggested Chromebook carts in the content areas at Granby Junior/Senior High School. So each content area will receive a cart. So the math, the science, the social studies, the English, and the specials will all receive a cart that they can use throughout the day.
What are the different programs they have access to on the computers?
Wow. Yeah, there are. So it's not like a laptop. So they're not getting Microsoft Word, Excel. They're using Google Classroom and Google Apps basically, that are very similar, but they are free. So basically, the Chromebook allows students to do all of their learning in the cloud. So nothing gets stored on the machine. That creates a better safety environment for us with students. It allows staff and students to talk in the Google Classroom. They respond back and forth to each other. So they're using Google Classroom, they're using Google Docs. In special education, they're using some apps specifically for students that might need more support. You're welcome. That's not to say that we don't have full labs, however, at Granby Junior/Senior High School that allows students to take advanced computer science and they actually need desktops, Windows-based desktops?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just making sure he was over my shoulder. And there's a request, there's a request to update that lab so that they can stay current with their AP Physics and AP Computer Science. From the back. This would be a great Seinfeld. Okay. Okay, so where do we want to go this year in FY '20? So just to back up the train a little bit, the way we build the budget is the instructional leadership teams meet. They discuss instruction, programming, where we're going. That discussion then is brought to the district leadership team and we discuss directions and professional development, programming, resources that we feel will move the district forward. Then we speak with school committee and get their thoughts around the direction that they want to go and then we prepare the budget. So this is a budget that really is from the bottom up and we're excited to present. So the goals were to maintain a level service budget, meaning that we would have the requisite staff, the resources that we currently have so that we were not in a reduction setting and we are not this year. We want to support the continuum of services programming for social-emotional learning. By that, we mean we would like to make sure that if students need more support, they're receiving that support here in Granby before we may need to make a decision to have an out-of-district placement and a tuition. Along the lines of continuing programming for social-emotional learning, as I mentioned, we're, we'd like to implement mindfulness training pre-K through 12 and a full implementation of the social-emotional learning program at East Meadow. I think to your point, we're very excited about the upgrade in technology at Granby Junior/Senior High School that we want to build into this budget this year. The decision to implement one-to-one technology devices in grades seven and eight support the learning that's already happening here in our, with our grade six students so when they transition to seven, there'll be no loss of device for them to continue learning in the ways that they are accustomed to. And then, of course, implementing the content-specific Chromebook carts for content areas at Granby Junior/Senior High School, which is a recommendation from the audit. This will allow us to sustain next-generation computer-based MCAS testing capacity. One of the things that the principals talked about was the fact that we were concerned that students didn't have enough time on computers testing in order for them to feel very comfortable when they sat down for a high-stakes test like MCAS. It could be that they'd only been experiencing a computer lab environment a couple of times a week. They would be doing research, but not really in the mindset of how do I use this device to help me take a test, especially a high-stakes test. And there are all kinds of digital support tools that are available to students, highlighters and word processing that students can use that we just felt like they might not have had the experience of and therefore, we weren't getting a true read of what they were, what they knew and what they were able to do. So we're hopeful that with this implementation of Chromebooks and the consistency of use throughout a student's day, that we will see some improvement in MCAS results. We also want to sustain our STEM coursework, which we've begun, and that's exciting. The students, if you walk into a STEM course, they're just out of their minds. You can't even get between them and their work. And that's through our Project Lead the Way and Advanced Computer Science. One of the things that we know, that we've asked for for several years, but know it's important, is to provide central office support for technology integration. David did, and the audit did reveal that we do need to have more tech hands and data management hands so that we can get the work done. We are so dependent on data that it's very important that the data is clean and gets sent appropriately to Desi. And it's not that David doesn't do it, it's just that David does it from seven to midnight when they're due and that can be a couple of months a year where he is here in addition to integrating technology and device management and infrastructure, he's actually also the data manager. So it's very clear we need that support. And then finally, we want to support curriculum development and implementation. We want to continue to provide support to our instructional leadership teams, implementation of the MAP assessment system in K through 12, which is a growth-based assessment, and then support staff in integrating 21st century digital learning through effective professional development and curriculum design. So that's where we want to go. Any questions on that?
I don't know if you're gonna answer this later, but I'll ask it now anyway. Henry said you have a balanced budget. Now what does that mean? What dollar amount are you using to balance that budget? And will you be asking more money from the towns? And what's the percent increase in the prior year's budget?
If you could hold, we will get to that. And then if we don't answer your question, then remind us, okay? You're welcome. So the good news is enrollment. If you recall, we've been in a declining enrollment environment for several years. For the first time in nine years, enrollment has not declined. We are maintaining enrollment at Granby Junior/Senior High School, which is a good indicator for us and we truly believe that the STEM implementation will help that as well, plus the Chromebook in middle school. So we're very excited to see if that impacts enrollment trends. Our kindergarten resident enrollment for FY '20 is 54 students from 45 in FY '19. And resident enrollment, as you know, is the key to our Chapter 70, which is the foundation of our budget. East Meadow enrollment has increased to 400 students this year. We've added 38, with 33 of those being resident enrollments. So that's exciting. I, I drive through Granby on a regular basis, daily. I'm thrilled to see the homes that are being built, the real estate that's turning over, the families that are coming in. Certainly, this school is a big part of that. And our future really is obviously gonna be focused at Granby Junior/Senior High School in terms of facilities, but for now, we're very excited that we are just about at capacity here at East Meadow. So that's, that's exciting. And the nuts and bolts is, is that it does translate into revenue. So that's exciting. Our school choice receiving is trending higher. We still have a concern that we have families that are choosing to use choice and choice out, trying to get to understand that. Sometimes it's more convenient, the school that families choose choice into might be on their way to work or there's an after-school care program or whatever it might be. We still have families that are choosing outside of Granby, so that's something that we would like to investigate. But overall, our school choice receiving is trending higher, so that's good for us. And we are able to maintain low-class sizes for FY '19. These are our average class sizes for FY '20. Kindergarten is 19, grade one is 14, grade two is 19, grade three will be 16, grade four will be 22, grade five will be 23, and grade six will be 17.
Do you know what your total school choice stands and how it is in this budget compared to last year, roughly?
You know, it's so funny you say that, 'cause I had that slide in here and then I took it out. So I will, when I turn it over, I will try, I will find that number for you. Okay. So our savings inefficiencies, obviously increased enrollment will mean increased revenue. Our salary savings through attrition and a new salary schedule will impact FY '20. We've had a reduction in special education tuition due to students aging out of special education. And we've also developed a strong special education programming in districts, so we're able to keep students with us here in Granby. We have seen and hope to continue to see facility savings here, particularly at East Meadow. We're a little cautious of that because we are air-conditioned here, so we're keeping an eye on that. This will be the first full year that we will have a facilities energy use for this new building. We, under efficiencies, we're effectively using our grants and other revenue reimbursements. By that, we mean our entitlement grants, our circuit breaker, and our school choice. So we're using those as we build the budget this year.
Is there much teacher turnover this year compared to prior years?
No, no. Actually, my first year, I gave out 15 pink slips. This year, there are none. We've actually added special education teachers to our program. So we have no, we have one retiring nurse and that is our sole attrition. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's it. Yeah, so it's had a huge impact in culture and climate in the district. Teachers are excited. This building has just been such an exciting place to be and to watch two schools come together as one staff. Bill's done an amazing job with that. And I actually sent an email the other day. I came over and it's not like me not to have intent. You know, I usually come over and I walk through the classrooms and we're taking notes and we're giving feedback and I just came over and walked through. I just, I just wanna be like here for a little bit and I was amazed. It is amazing. And if anybody wants to just walk through, just let me know and we'll walk through it. To watch kids take their Chromebooks into open spaces and do projects together, to watch our special education students riding their bikes through the hallways, to, to watch breakout spaces and ball pits and all of the things that we, we want our kids to participate. There, there's joy in the building and you can feel it. And so we are very excited about the direction that the district is going and I think staff feel it too. Yes?
As part of your efficiencies segment, did you want to talk about the cost avoidance of our special education, our social-emotional learning program?
Sure. Can I maybe go get that memo so I get the numbers right?
You know, in a quick nutshell, we started talking about investing in the social-emotional learning program a few years ago and the intent was really to see whether or not some students, ideally who should not be leaving the district and should remain in the district, can be kept here and whether or not we could provide those resources for those students. And Carolyn's done a great job just building that program to the point that we now are able to see how many students would otherwise go outside the district and how much it would cost versus how we are able to keep them here and what that would cost. So the difference between those two numbers is the cost avoidance for us. It's not shown here, but it's truly a way to find efficiencies in the way we are, we are delivering education in the district.
Do we keep our students here and provide them what they need to be successful?
So, let me just see. That was last year's. I will find the exact numbers because I don't want to misspeak, but it is significant savings when we're able to keep students in district upwards of... If I bo, I think she'll have it. Okay.
Now, when you say that we have a need to hire more special education teachers?
So for the social-emotional learning program at the elementary school, we hired one teacher and three paraprofessionals.
Yeah, and proudly swaying, emphasizing what Carol said. It's not only, it's not only about the cost avoidance and saving time, but the students actually benefit from being here in their own environment with their own friends and their own community as well. So it is really the key driver of the social-emotional learning program that we have. But that is, I just wanted to mention it because in terms of efficiencies, that has that dividend that it's paying because we're able to keep our students here in our district.
Well, and I know you'd want the numbers. So if we were to take the four students that are in need of additional support and have to place them out of district, that cost could run $312,000 for tuition, transportation. Keeping them here by creating a program, the cost of that program, keeping them here, is only $178,900.
Is that for a year?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And those are not the only students that are out of district, just differently?
Right, right.
My statement only is, I think it's a little bit of a deja vu moment. I remember a year or two ago, there was a session about funding allocated to start this program and in the end, only two of the four families were committing or able to stay, two still needed to come out. If this program is developed fully, are all those families required to stay in district?
So it's a process. So what you're referring to is the high school program. So the high school program was built, but it was built differently and the students were already out. So through the IEP process, it was decided that these students needed more support than Granby could provide at the time. Then we created the program and said, would you like to come back and see? And they were like, you know, families have that decision to say, no, my, my child's being very successful and for whatever reason, we're gonna continue in the program. So this is a way, once we've built the program first, now we can have students in the program, support students. That's not to say that at some point, a student may need more support than we're able to provide. That may happen. But this is the progression of services that at least we can begin to offer more support than we, than we could prior and would be our recommendation at an IEP meeting to be in this program to provide the support for the student.
It provides a continuum of services across all grades. Whereas we have a really good program running up at the high school that provides some kids all-day support, other kids check-ins, some kids a single class. So it provides them that social-emotional support they need, whereas here, we didn't have that. So we're trying to do that and we only had one social worker. So now we have two and we're able to provide the support.
Does that include physical support? You just said emotional and social, like, does that include physical needs, special physical needs of certain students too?
Yeah.
Equipment and things like that? Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah, no, absolutely. Based on their IEP, if they need, you know, walkers or special chairs, yes.
So for the FY '20 budget, these are the additions to the budget and the costs associated. So we have, for offering innovative and continuous learning experiences, not only again was this the result of our work with the school committee and with the leadership team and the instructional leadership teams, but this also includes some additions that came about as the result of the technology audit that we had and we knew this was coming and the timing was a little bit, it was a challenge because it was really close to budget season, but we knew it was coming, so we wanted to get it in the FY '20 budget. So to implement the one-to-one at grades seven and eight, that's 25,000. To implement the content area at the high school is 31,000. The teacher laptops, which was a condition or recommendation of the technology audit, is 14,000. Teachers here at East Meadow have a laptop. We're working with David to make those really portable so as teachers are working at grade-level meetings or at professional development, they can take these devices. So it's only sensible that the high school folks would need that as well. We are in need of replacing the computer science labs at the high school to run Windows ten. Right now, they will run only Windows seven and there's no adjustment further we can make with those machines. We will be still using donated computers and converting donated laptops into Chromebooks. And those would be distributed as, as needed throughout Granby Junior Senior High School. And in order to make the mobile system work, there's a management device that we need, piece of software that allows David to push out updates to the Chromebooks easily, and that's five thousand. And then, the technology audit really pushed us to consider how we can get from our beginning levels of technology integration into higher-order technology integration. So, away from substituting using technology as like a digital worksheet and actually moving us into using the technology to collaborate, to problem-solve, and to communicate effectively, not only amongst ourselves here in Granby, but problem-solving outside. So, being, becoming parts of STEM work groups that students are working together in the digital environment. And to do that and to update curriculum and to provide professional development, we are, we have in the budget a curriculum coordinator slash technology integration specialist that would work with staff and the leadership team to really develop the K-12 program in all content so that our, our curriculum, our units, and our lessons have twenty-first century learning embedded in them and really push the learning of students. To celebrate success and engage the community, we have an ask of twenty thousand. And that is for improvement in the website and the development of an app so that when we're pushing out information, it can very easily go to our parents, anybody's phone if they download the app. So, we're very excited about that. The program is called Aptigi and we're excited to engage with them. And then, the focus on social, emotional, and physical well-being. It is to have the one-point-oh special education teacher here at East Meadow, the halftime adjustment counselor, a three paraprofessionals to support the social emotional program, and then also implementing the mindfulness training next year for the entire district. And then, the proper resources to sustain best possible learning environments. We are continuing with our map testing at ten thousand, upgrading the administrator computers. All of our computers are running Windows seven, they all have to be upgraded to Windows ten. That's nineteen thousand five hundred. As you may have heard, the select board decided to terminate our shared services agreement. For us, that meant we share the services of the director of public facilities and we share the services or the cost of two facilities people. So, in order to make that termination, the school department had to take on the full salary of a facilities coordinator. We're actually going to change the role a little bit and make it a facilities coordinator. And we need to support a full-time maintenance technician slash custodian. So, we're creating basically our facilities department in-house. That's not to say that we will not continue to receive services from the town, because we will. On our in-kind sheet, the big fields that get mowed ten times a year, the town charges the school department for that. Through the in-kind, we will still receive that service. We have a strong relationship with DPW. When there's a need, I'm sure they will be over. They help us if we need to rip out big shrubs in front of the school. So, they fill our potholes, things like that. I'm sure we'll continue that relationship. But we do need to build our district facilities department. So, with that, it's the facility, facilities coordinator, which is half that salary, thirty-five thousand. And then, the maintenance technician custodian is twenty-five thousand, which is half of the salary we have to pick up. And then, of course, we'll need some equipment. We need lawn mower, weed whacker, think of how you take care of your house, we need all of that stuff. So, the total request is four hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred dollars for additions. Okay, any questions on that? We're going to get there. Okay, this is you.
Okay. Uh, can you go back to the other slide though, because I think it's important to highlight the, the part where it's focused on social, emotional, and physical well-being. That part, we've actually started to implement this year. So, the cost of that isn't necessarily above and beyond what we're asking for in FY twenty. We're, we've gotten some of that in FY nineteen through some savings. But a bulk of our additional asks come with the technology audit and the termination of shared services. So, I just wanted to make that, that clear, that we're not asking for close to five hundred thousand dollars.
Does adding on the maintenance portion, is that more than what the shared services in kind was?
So, the in-kind, the only position on the in-kind that was charged to us was one shared maintenance person, position. Outside of the in-kind, we shared the cost of the facilities director and a second maintenance person. So, I don't know if I answered your question exactly. If you're asking, is it going to be more expensive for us? Yes, it's going to be a little bit more expensive for us.
Oh, there's.
No, no, I'm, I'm just looking from, because the in-kind would still have to show up.
So, they took, okay, so in the FY twenty in-kind, they took the shared services cost off.
Okay.
Yes. Good? Okay.
Okay, so this is pretty much an overview on how we get to our budget and the final number. So, I'll go through this rather quickly, but if there's any questions along the way on what something is, please ask. So, chapter seventy is the money, the revenue that we receive directly from the state. So, as of the third Wednesday in January, when Governor Baker releases his budget, our chapter seventy number was four-point-six million dollars. That number can and probably will change once the budget goes through House Ways and Means and gets finalized. History tells us that we would see a small increase if anything. Very rarely do you see a decrease once it passes its way through there. But it's just good to remind everyone, this is preliminary. So, this is the only number that we have right now to work with as of Governor Baker's first iteration of his budget. Required local is quite simply the number that the state tells the town of Granby they have to give the school department. It's a complicated equation that I will not get into. But it, it's pretty much, they tell the town, you have to give the school department this amount of money and that's what they give us. If you take those numbers together, the four-point-six and the four-point-nine million, you add them up, that number, which is about nine-point-five or so million dollars, if my quick math is right, is what we call net school spending. And that is what the state tells us, any district in Massachusetts, that that's the minimum that they can spend on education in the district. Questions? Okay. The override that you see is three hundred and five thousand. That is a reduced number from years past, I believe it was five hundred and five thousand?
So, three oh five is the override that happened in two thousand and five. Last year, through work with the finance committee and the select board, there was an additional two hundred thousand added to that. And that has not been added this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It wasn't an override, that was really part of the budget conversation that we had with the select board that was added. This is, the override that we're talking about here is the override that was voted about ten years ago at the town meeting and then went out as required by law.
So, the next three items you see are regular transportation, special education, transportation, and athletic transportation. Now, that money comes from the town as a source of revenue for us, although those costs are built into our budget. So, if you take everything from chapter seventy all the way down to athletic transportation, that gives you the amount of ten-point-seven million dollars. The amount of in-kind this year, with the loss of shared services and some other minor adjustments in categories, the in-kind, in-kind amount this year is two-point-one million dollars. So, the net of that ten-point-seven and that two-point-one million dollars is, as you can see, eight-point-five million dollars. That is, if you think about it, the amount of cash or check that the town would cut to the school department for FY twenty.
Or cut on behalf of the school.
Yes, that, that's, yes, yes, yes. Thank you, but yes. Any questions to that point? Okay. Here's where we'll get into some details and I'm sure some questions. So, our budget, the, the school department's budget, the total cost that it would take to run the school department for FY twenty is a little over ten-point-four million dollars. Now, to answer your question from earlier, it's about five percent more than last year. I'm using some round numbers, it's about five percent increase. Ten-point-four million dollars. We're going to offset some of those costs with some revenue and some grant, like we mentioned earlier. Circuit breaker, school choice, our entitlement grants, which are Title I, Title II-A, Title IV, sped IDEA. We're going to offset that budget with those revenue streams. Additionally, we're, we're projecting as of now, and again, this is preliminary, we're a little early in the, in that process, but we're projecting to have about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars carryover surplus from FY nineteen. Again, it could be less, it could be more. For, for the purpose of this budget, we're going to use two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to offset some additional costs, which would then get us to the eight-point-five million dollars that the town would allocate to us for FY twenty. Thus, we wouldn't be on town meeting floor asking for any additional money to balance the budget. Yes?
Where's the carryover coming from?
So, the carryover is coming from some salary savings, some, we've had some tuition savings in special education. We've reallocated them already to cover some of the costs of the social emotional learning program, but there'll be some savings there. And there'll be some savings in other areas. Again, we're building the budget for next year now. So, it's kind of, kind of hard to hold us to those numbers, you know, twelve, fourteen months in advance of when the year ends. So, there, there'll be some savings in other areas. Again, this is a real cautious number, a preliminary number, but it's, it's a pretty accurate number for reflection on FY nineteen. So, again, between the revenues and the grant offsets and this surplus of FY nineteen, we meet the town's allocation.
Those first two numbers, when you add them together, that's a state minimum, correct?
I'm sorry, the chapter seventy and the required local?
Yes.
Yes, that's.
Did that, how much did that change by from the prior year?
So, chapter seventy, we didn't see that much of an increase, fourteen thousand dollars. And that's another formula based that the state kind of gives you per pupil, it amounted to fourteen thousand dollars. The big change came in the required local contribution, which was about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more this year than we received or than they gave us last year.
Where else is the rest of that five percent increase in your budget coming from over the prior year?
So, we have our fixed costs, which is, in Granby is, I would say eighty-five, ninety percent is salaries. A lot of those is salaries. We moved to a newer salary schedule that bought us some savings, but also as teachers move to the next step or get a percent increase, there's, there's increase to that. The big one was the results of the technology audit. So, the one-to-one implementation, the curriculum slash technology coordinator, all that came to about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars extra on top of what we had already built into the budget, stuff that was not in the budget last year.
So, what you're saying is, I guess, what did you say, the state minimum increased by a hundred?
Hundred-and-fifty-two thousand or so?
Let's say state a hundred-and-fifty thousand and you add the two-fifty on the bottom for the carryover, that's four-hundred thousand dollars extra from, that you, that you used for this budget.
Exactly, exactly. And keep in mind, we were not asking for an additional two-hundred thousand. So, last year, in that override column, it says three oh five, last year was about five-hundred-and-five thousand. We're not asking for that additional two-hundred thousand and we are adding some things that are important to the growth of the school department. We really, the, the admin team did an awesome job. We met starting in October-ish, September, October to kind of build a calendar and kind of, you know, seek, seek out the path that we wanted to take. And we put a, a lot of work in and it was kind of looking at what the district needed differently than how it was looked at in prior years and using resources differently than we have in prior years. The, the technology audit was a big, even though we kind of knew what those results would be, the cost of it is, is large. So, it's good to keep in mind that those costs won't be in the budget again next year. They're, they're one-time costs for this year. We've already talked about replacement plans for all the one-to-one devices that would come probably two, three, maybe four years. So, it's not going to be a two-hundred-and-thirty or three-hundred thousand dollar increase every year to the budget.
For technology.
For technology, yes, for technology. We're, we're taking a pretty big risk, but also a pretty big step in implementing everything from that technology audit all at once. But I think it, two or three years down the road, it'll certainly give us a return on investment that, that we put into this year, so.
Looks good, did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least that's been taken.
Wait, what did you say?
I have to comment though, I feel like technology in the past few budgets are, was one of the first things that had to be done.
Yes.
Funds for the, for the technology. So, this is us catching up from year after year of nickel and diming the budget.
Yes.
Right, yep. And, and we're hopeful that, again, that we're going to make an investment in that the kids that choice out happen to stay in the district and we might receive some students from other districts here. So, we're just trying to, to change the, the culture and the way that we've done things here for the last few years. And I think this budget is a really good reflection of that.
I also think at Granby Junior Senior High School in particular, we really looked at the schedule for seven through twelve and made some adjustments and reallocation of staff so that if we had openings in, in positions because of attrition that we didn't hire necessarily, we would look at where people maybe could teach within their certification areas. And even sometimes, we're allowed to have a teacher teach twenty percent outside of the certification area. We allocated teachers from regular ed to special education. And because Granby Junior Senior High School is now on the same schedule, we can have, let's say, a math teacher, for example, teach one section of grade eight, which we couldn't do that before when it was a different schedule. So, that's allowed us to be much more resourceful with our staff and cut down on some of our salary, what we might have in the past considered as a hire. We've taken a look and said, we don't maybe need that hire. We maybe can take that position and reallocate it to special education and build our programs that way.
I know last year, you had a few issues where you had to send, I guess you have handicapped students out to other locations that cost a lot of money. Have you built any reserves into your budget for things like that happening again?
Yes, it, it, so, and Carol can speak to this on the programmatic side of it, but as fiscally, in that example that we used for sixty thousand dollars for sending four, that's on the low end of a tuition. Tuitions could be up towards eighty, a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars by the time you decide, you know, send a kid out. So, it wouldn't be fiscally responsible for us to build in one or two extra tuitions at a hundred thousand dollars hoping that we have to spend it when we don't want to. With that being said, Carol and I worked together closely this year and will continue to do that to make sure that the kids that are, we're sending out. to make sure that the kids that are, we're sending out need to be sent out, they're receiving the services that we're paying for, the transportation that we're providing or they're provided is what it should be. But, yes, we we build in some um contingency for that added district placement that we might not know about. Um, but it's tough with the with the the range in costs of added district tuition to to set one or two amount for tuitions aside and and say, you know, hopefully we have a kid that we have to send out.
But you also have a situation where if if a student here at Granby wasn't provided with the uh area they were interested in, you also have to send them out. So that's like a second type of situation, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there anything provided for that?
So when we present our budget originally with Chris, um, we are made aware at Granby Junior Senior High School, I believe you're talking about vocational students. Yeah, um, so we work with our guidance department to uh understand which students are in the process of uh applying for uh vocational. Uh, what tripped us up, so to speak, last time was we had a student move into district who was already at a vocational uh setting um and at a school that uh our partner vocational school Pathfinder didn't offer. Um, so that student had to stay there, so that was an added tuition and an added transportation cost because the student moved in. Um, we can anticipate that, um, that's a good question. Yes, they are still there.
Okay, so we'll have those costs again.
Yep, but they they're known now, so they're built into the information that we give to Chris. One of the great things about Pathfinder, though, is they've actually built a plumbing program. Um, so our future students who were maybe choosing Smith Vocational uh for plumbing now um can go to Pathfinder uh as our vocational program. So it's one bus, it's, you know, it it's a cost savings for us, and Pathfinder is a fabulous, fabulous program.
So, yes, so hold on, just to answer that, your original question, uh, circuit breaker, the revolving fund of circuit breaker i- is um meant for and used um to to fund something like that, an added district tuition that we might not have um budgeted. It it's not a lot in our case, um, but it is kind of a safety valve if if that situation arises.
So, Rich, in the, in the past, because we're we're really playing on a very tight budget, these lineups were shifted from one to the other. Now, the intent is, if it's circuit breaker and it should be earmarked and kept for, you know, contingencies related to special education, that is, that is how it's done. So the answer to your question is, uh, we are hoping to build a buffer that will allow us to to uh uh be able to go through those fluctuations if they happen at all. That's how it was, or that's how it is in school districts, they that that have a a healthy fiscal uh uh situation. That's that's where we're trying to get to, but it's gonna take a few iterations to get to uh that that number.
I had a question, please, about class size in the elementary level. And I know class size is always a big topic across the district um right here. But now that the scheduling in the high school is a little bit more consistent, are we still seeing thirty-plus kids in a core class in the high school level? Now that scheduling and teachers can be shared, is that still a problem at high school, about grade seven to twelve?
Thirty-plus, there could be maybe a couple of electives and core courses. I don't believe there's anything over twenty-six or twenty-seven right now. And some electives grow a little bit, just if they're only offered one block during the day and a student. So sometimes with teacher permission, those classes grow a little bit more. Uh, but in core courses, typically not.
So most of the time, we are part of the conversation, but as an observer of what seems to be different uh this last year or so, uh, if you don't mind me sharing. First of all, that connection or that collaboration across uh the administrative team, I think that is really a starting point for uh all the improvements that uh we're trying to make. Uh, because they are really coming up with all these different suggestions, ideas, creative approaches that is allowing everyone to look for opportunities for improvement, that's one. The second thing is, uh, we benefited greatly uh from having Adam this uh last year because uh day in, day out, they were able to have those conversations and then uh gauge whether or not it was fis- fiscally sensible, whether it was something we could do or not, and we immediately had our answers. With all that, uh, the third approach was, whatever we thought or uh the school district thought of something new, the first uh place to look was whether or not there was a grant available too. So some of the new um programs that you are seeing are the result of grants that required some visits to different areas, applications, but we're trying to really build that muscle so that we are looking for grants available to be able to uh provide more services uh to our students in the district. The, probably as importantly, uh, the ability to build the budget bottom uh bottom up. So come together very early in the process, September, October timeline, and then start building it with every small piece uh from the foundation up, allowed uh everyone to see the efficiencies in the process. Or and by that, what I mean is, do we really need this, or does this done in the best way possible? So as we go forward, hopefully this will uh this will continue to pay uh more dividends, that's one. But what is also lost us to do is, particularly based on this um this slide, uh, we were always having this conversation about declining enrollment. And declining enrollment really means a few things. One is really, we are losing something from our school district, and with that, we are losing revenue as well that we would like to keep in our district. Now that we are seeing that upswing, uh, and now that we are able to build our programs in a way that makes our school districts really competitive with everyone around us, we are hoping those numbers, uh, at least for for a uh for a while, to continue to increase then and stabilize. And when we get to that point, hopefully the conversation uh around that uh mid-school spending, you know, the uh enrollment-based uh numbers will be uh will be even uh better because we're gonna see more students and more revenues coming along with that.
Any other questions? Yes.
What are we doing to add more students?
What are we doing to add more students? So, um, one of the things that the leadership team has been talking about uh are w- ways to help shape the conversation of transition grades. So where we notice that students may be thinking about making a different decision, uh, fifth to sixth and sixth to seventh and eighth to ninth are uh really critical transition years. Uh, we've been talking about um developing after-school programming around student interests, so not necessarily a five-day program, but maybe some short um interest-based inventories so that students maybe would be participating in a short cooking class or a short quilting class, or something to build community around student interest and engagement with staff. Um, we've also uh been talking about all of the middle school uh STEM robotics types of courses, bringing those down uh to East Meadow, but also um bringing them up through nine through twelve um and creating pathways um and potentially uh work-study opportunities for students in uh STEM partnerships with universities or uh local businesses. So those are some of the ideas. Um, really, it's about communicating out the great work that we are doing. Um, and then I mentioned it prior, um, I think communicating with families as they're making the decision to understand, are there things that we could be doing differently? Um, are there things that uh we could be building that would be um that would support children and students more? Um, or is it a convenience factor uh for folks, so? Jen?
Um, what is the capacity of this building for students? Um, you had said that we were, I know we have four hundred in here now, what happens when we hit capacity? These people are wanting to come in, which is great, that's what we were working for. What happens if we can't accept? Do we get rid of our school choice, then sorry, you can't, if you have to?
Right, yep, right. So every year, the school committee decides on school choice participation, um, and that is the discussion, how many um seats can we open at the grade levels based on resident enrollment? So if you're looking, for example, at kindergarten, um, the only uh acceptance of school choice are siblings. Uh, so if we have a school choice and there's a sibling entering kindergarten, we do accept those students. Um, but we do not open other seats. Um, so, yeah, it's an ongoing conversation.
As you can see, the numbers fluctuate.
Yeah.
So it naturally kind of lends itself to some conversation around which grades are much, which grades are more uh open for uh school choice potentially. But the nice trend that we've been seeing, and that was, I think, one of the early slides, we are seeing a lot of new folks coming to Granby. Uh, and to be very honest, a larger than expected uh portion of the new students uh happen to be residents. And that's a, that's a great thing.
Yeah.
Uh, that that creates consistency and stability for the school district. But, um, a- again, if you look at the numbers, there is still some capacity. Uh, to the extent that we can gauge the number of folks who are likely to move into town, so that's that's gonna require some research and understanding of the housing capacity in town. Uh, and um supplementing that with uh school choice, that's basically uh where we would like to go as a as a school committee. It's not really, it's not really a a strong science, there is really, it's not, I mean, you can't really, you can't really determine how many people will be moving into the town and how many will have kids, how many, you know? But, you know, we're we're basically every year trying to determine a number that is sensible enough uh for for uh school choice seats.
This grade six number, um, is this with three classrooms? Because I remember at the beginning of the year, the position was a one-year only, or is this with two classrooms? Is anybody here?
Every three.
So the position continues?
And that was the, that was a decision that was made. Because as you can see, then, you know, we're we're coming up with uh more students. Uh, I don't know if that's two, two classes.
That number there, no reflex, that three, I think.
No, the twenty-three, is it two?
For grade five.
For fifth grade, there's two classes.
Two.
Uh, so what we were able to do last year, if my memory is not misleading, we were able to really shift uh a teacher, when the numbers go down and we don't even need to open three, then we can shift and then we can switch to a two-classroom. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you know how much money Granby gets for, from the state, for a resident student compared to a choice student? How much?
So the per pupil, again, i- when you have some free time, you can look into that chapter seventy formula and enjoy it.
I don't get how they.
The per pupil amount is about eleven thousand dollars if you're a resident student in Granby, compared to a five thousand dollars we get for a school choice student.
Unless there's a special ed um increment for in, for a school choice student.
So it would be very advantageous to.
To have them in, yeah, have our own kids come to our schools, correct, yep.
So one of, one of the, uh, what Cheryl was mentioning, uh, student tuitioning in, if some of the programs that we're offering in our district are really robust enough and good enough that other districts can send their students uh to our district, that happens as well, and there's a tuition. That's not school choice at that point, especially for special education purposes. And we have a couple of, one student, a couple of students.
We've had some interest from other districts for our social emotional program at the high school. We had a couple of districts send families to toward the program.
And those tuitions are not, just to be clear, are not really at the rates that you heard. Those are really tuitions that would reflect special. Yeah, tho- those reflect uh special education uh tuitions, which are fairly high. So that that creates an opportunity for the school district.
For a regular student, around eleven thousand, you said?
Yep.
And it's five or six?
For, for a.
Five.
Yes, for a regular school choice student, it's five thousand dollars.
But if there's a, an emotional or disability some, some type, it's.
There's a formula on top of that five thousand dollars that you would receive, yep.
So the, um, I guess the last thing that I can think of, uh, you know, those of you who've been watching the school committee meetings, if you were, you probably are aware, but there is now a a greater inclination to really explore opportunities for the state to fund uh school districts uh a little more fully. Um, and this year, you know, was the first year, really, we heard almost everybody from governor down uh talking about it. And there's, there's almost this um attempt to balance uh their budgets in a way that reflects some increased amount for public education. All that said, uh, there is this uh new formula that we are hoping they will adopt. And if that new formula had been adopted, we would have received from the state uh a little more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And Robin was at a meeting last week, uh, along with some other folks uh in Chigbee, uh, meeting with elected officials advocating for that formula to be adopted and then uh the districts being able to receive more funding. So our share that is on the table that we are not yet able to uh take advantage of is a little over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The other disadvantage that school districts like Granby uh have is that, uh, you know, we are kind of in the middle of two different worlds. Some people think of us as a suburb, some people think of us as a rural uh school district. And Cheryl has been part of a coalition that is called Rural uh School Coalition, uh, and that is primarily among the schools uh in western Massachusetts. We actually are on the list of rural schools, but what they did, they tiered those schools into three categories, so tier one, two, three, and we are on tier three. When they started funding those schools on the list, they only funded tier one schools last year. Now, there is a stronger push to uh fund the other two tiers as well. And if that gets to that, hopefully we will realize a little more uh funding uh through those means as well. So, again, there is, there's a lot of good work in progress, there are a lot of good changes in the district that are happening, and when all those come together, we hope that we're gonna have better budget conversations uh. Starting this year, we're gonna have better conversations uh in the coming years.
So as Emery mentioned, um, the Foundation Budget Review Committee did their work uh three years ago. It's been in debate for the last two years, how to fund um upwards of three billion dollars in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to have the formula accurately reflect the cost of health insurance, um, special education, and a host of other things that really impact a school district, but but really aren't costs of the classroom. And so the chapter seventy formula is out of date. Uh, Granby, um, unfortunately, uh, we would not benefit in that foundation review um implementation for special education costs or um health insurance costs or economically disadvantaged because our subgroup numbers aren't high enough. But what we would benefit from is the minimum aid, um, that it would be um increased in the formula. That amount is estimated to be a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars uh to us. And so as long as minimum aid is part of that conversation, then we would benefit. Um, so our work as the school committee and as superintendent, um, and as hopefully you, is to reach out to our legislators and really push the foundation budget um implementation with minimum aid. Now, that, at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, minimum aid is fantastic, but if we could include rural schools or small school aid, that would be additional uh revenue for us. So we've been continuing to work hard with uh Mohawk Regional uh and Mike Budacanti, who has really pushed this uh with our legislators, um, and uh Montague, um, Mike Sullivan, who's pushing small school um aid packages to benefit um schools. So, um, you know, when, when Granby is meeting net school spending only plus three oh five and our per pupil expenditures, you know, are around eleven thousand, um, and you have other districts that are spending upwards of twenty, twenty-three thousand, um, that's where we need to have a longer-term conversation about what it truly costs to run the district and how we can develop a sustainable um budget uh for Granby that includes, hopefully, these increases, but hopefully a realization of the true costs of education in Granby.
Haven't, haven't uh Granby residents or the Gran- Haven't, haven't Granby residents or the Granby school system been penalized? Because in these formulas, they assume that the family income of a lot of residents in Granby is kind of high, above the average.
That's part of it, and part of it is our ex, we have an ex, we've had, we've had, we don't have it anymore. It's the first time in nine years. We've had an extreme decline in enrollment, unlike anything seen in the Commonwealth. So we went from about eleven hundred students to six hundred and forty-eight, I think, within eight years. That's unheard of. And so even though the formula is designed to hold harmless districts, we went beyond even that factor. And that's the result of, you know, that mass exodus that we had to McDuffie, when McDuffie came on board and was offering, you know, some pretty substantial tuition, abatement programs for sta, for students. We're not seeing that anymore, which is a good thing. At that same time, we had the school at Granby Junior Senior High School, the building project did not pass. And that sent a message to some of our families that choice was an option. So we saw a real increase in choice out at that time. And so, you know, we, we have reversed that trend, or at least flattened that trend. Next year, our hope is that the thirty-eight-plus students that are residents will hit chapter seventy. That would be great, because we'll get more funding from the state, but it will most likely mean a net school spending increase for the town as well. So we have to balance that, but we are seeing a positive trend in revenue for Granby. And again, as Adam said, some of what we're expending this year are one-time expenses. So we're hoping that we have planned FY twenty in a way that also helps us prepare for twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three.
Well, if chapter seventy funds go up, you would think the required local go down. You add the two together to get a total. So you're saying if chapter seventy goes up, the required local will go up too?
Again, so the, the required local is a formula based on taxes, prop two and a half. There's a lot that goes into that required local foundation that is separate from the chapter seventy calculation. So, yes, it would be, it would be an increase to both chapter seventy, the foundation budget, and the required local contribution, hopefully. But again...
We don't really expect that if, you know, the hundred and sixty that we're talking about, if that were to be realized, that the whole thing would fall on the town. There should be some, a more balanced act. This year is a little weird because of all the factors that are coming to play as they are accounting that foundation budget, which includes, you know, the tax revenues and what they perceive to be the, the indicators within the town, whether it's, you know, the housing value and, you know, certain demographics and all that. And to answer your earlier question, yes, we were disadvantaged. Granted, this formula that is still being used was probably obsolete about five years into it, if not before. And all districts were complaining. But some of the factors that they thought would mitigate and allow districts like ours, or any district, I shouldn't say district like ours, but any district, to be able to receive a little more funding, they were not really part of Granby's texture. So we did not have some of the demographics, we did not really need some of the economic conditions, we did not need some of the, you know, special education situations. So when you put all those together, yes, we were more disadvantaged than other school districts. We're not alone in that. The school districts that have similar characteristics, they were equally hurt by that budget. But hopefully, you know, we're expecting that, or we're hoping that in the next year or so, there will be more serious conversations and they're going to vote to adopt that new foundation budget, foundation formula.
Any other questions?
So what we have, this is actually, you, our visitors are the first to see this updated version of the budget. What we are going to do, more than likely on April first, we're going to have another joint meeting with the finance committee and the select board, where we're going to share with them the same budget, but with more details. In fact, we're going to send a detailed budget to them for them to review prior to that meeting so that we can have a deeper conversation. And once that is done, the school committee will approve this budget or something pretty close to this budget. And we're going to go to the town floor with, with this budget for, to request appropriation on those amounts. We're not going to, we're not going to stand in front of the town meeting to request any, any additional funds this year. So we're pretty happy about that. But we're also looking forward to the conversations we're going to have with the finance committee and the select board, you know, around the numbers and what is happening in the district. All good?
Public hearing, good.
All right. So with that said, we're going to close our public hearing. Thank you all very much for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions, it would be appreciated. And if you would like to, come back when we have our joint meeting with the select board and the finance committee.
All right.
Are you going to shut that off? Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. All right, so now, back to our regularly scheduled programming.
It, it goes to Carol in that little bag.
So we're going to continue our regular meeting. The first item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from March eleventh, two warrants, zero zero five six and zero zero five seven, and two donations. So what I would like to do, I would like to ask for a motion to approve, then we can have some conversation around the donations, because I want to make sure that, you know, the numbers are heard and then we approve those appropriately. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, there are two donation items. One of them is related to our JV volleyball program. And if you have seen it in your packages in the consent agenda folder, this is for shirts for boys volleyball. Is that the specific intent of it? Okay. All right, so with that, the amount donated is, what is it? Or is it the shirts that are donated?
The shirts. There wasn't an amount on there, right?
Okay, so we're going to receive the shorts and not an amount to be able to purchase the shirts. Okay, good.
Correct, yeah. Somebody bought the jerseys and are donating the jerseys.
All right. So that is the first one. The second donation is related to a generous donation from our PTO to the East Meadow Elementary School in the amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And Bill, I believe, the intent is to divide it equally among grades, which is about seven hundred and fifty?
Seven fifty per grade level, and it's offset a field trip amount, so that way when... Mostly it includes transportation and covering the transportation and the buses and whatnot. It really makes a big difference per student to, to cut down some of the costs.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So we're very thankful to the PTO for doing this again this year. That's, that's a large amount.
Yep, absolutely. We, we really appreciate their, their generosity. So I just wanted to make sure that those numbers were, were clear, and the two donations. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Didn't he already do that?
Pardon me? Oh, we did that, sorry, yes. Lack of sleep sometimes gets so...
We just wanted to make sure we were all paying attention.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well done, Jess. We passed, woo-hoo!
Okay, all in favor to approve the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any more visitors' comments? Don't? All right. Moving on to new business, the first one is changes to, is it integrated or integrated?
Int...
Integrated.
Integrated.
Okay, so, yeah, I was confused. It says integrated. I didn't know if it was a new term. So changes to integrated preschool, and Carol's going to walk us through that.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
So, mm, second year here, during twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we added a second half-day preschool. Our numbers continue to grow. And so this year, we had a full-day program and two half-day sessions. So we're able to serve forty-five preschoolers. These are integrated programs, which means that half are preschool-aged students that are peer role models, and seven of them are students with disabilities, students that have IDP services. This, last spring, they screened several students, but because we had only so many openings for peers, we weren't a lot, we weren't able to take any three-year-olds because we only had enough openings, I think we had seven openings, because kids start with us at three, stay till four, then five, they move on. This year, we also ran up against the DESI regulations as far as ratios. You can only have seven students with disabilities and eight peers, a total of fifteen. We right now are teetering. We only have one slot left, and early intervention has let us know that we have two students that if enrolled, we will have to apply for a waiver because we will go to eight and eight in one of the classrooms. So when that happens, the department, when you send in your waiver, they write back and they say, well, how are you going to solve this moving forward? So I reached out to our area special ed directors to find out what they're doing in their districts. Many of them only offer half a day. And the reason they do that is they're able to then have three-year-olds and have enough slots for kids with disabilities. So I'm recommending that we move in that direction, that we, by doing this, we will add fifteen more slots. So that's eight more peers and seven more special education students would have programming.
What is the, if any, what is the downside? So if we go in that direction, could, we'd lose...
So we, we have been, we have been having a full-day class, you know, where the kids stay all day. But it would mean that more students can have an experience because we turned away students last year, several.
I guess what I'm trying to understand, Carol, is if at least one of the attractive features in the program that we had was the fact that it was full-day, when we, are we saying we're going to make it half-day only?
Yes.
So when we make it half-day only, do we know what is, what the risk is to lose some of those families? Because they may be dependent on that full, full day.
So all of the students currently in the full day will be in kindergarten next year. So the, the students that are now will be impacted, only have half-day now. And the preschool teachers have been talking to parents. They recently went to the library, to the playgroup, to recruit, and let them know that, that we would be having half-day sessions. And many of them said that that's all they really wanted, was a half a day, because they enjoy having time, you know, when the older kids are off at school and they're with their younger one at home. So it's not going to impact, it's not like anyone is going to all of a sudden go from a full day to a half-day. Those kids will go to grade five, you know, kind of kindergarten.
And, and many of our full-day families, or families that have a need for full day, use Children's First or other childcare slash pre-K programming in town.
So you're saying that the two half-day program, that those are three-year-olds?
So our programs are for three and four-year-olds. Last year, when we were taking in peers, because we had, we tried to make sure that we offer four-year-olds slots, because we had so many four-year-olds, we weren't able to take any three-year-olds. Our three-year-olds were only students on IAPs. So there were many siblings of some students, you know, but we didn't have the slots. This time, we'll have another eight slots for peers. So we're more likely to be able to take some three-year-olds as well.
So do you anticipate any, any problems with this? I mean, I know what your recommendation is, but I'm assuming that you're thinking about any potential downsides.
So I, you know, I don't see any downside. I mean, right now, we have, every classroom has seven special education students in it. So, you know, we're at the max. The advantage of having four slots, we can spread out the students with disabilities so that there's more, more peer role models to support them, which is a benefit, because then you have one little kid on each side, you know, helping them. And my thing is, is I felt really bad for, for the parents who brought their kids for screening, and, you know, we weren't able to take, you know, many of them.
So there won't be an impact because all of the full-day kids are moving up, and none of the other kids are expecting full day because they've already been... So once you're enrolled in a half-day spot, your spot stays half-day from three to four?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't lose the kids by saying, okay, we're not...
Right, that's what I was wondering too.
Yeah.
Is there, are there any costs associated with this change?
If anything, we get more funding because we're able to take in more students.
All good?
Yeah, I mean, you answered, I mean, my biggest question was already answered, so.
All right. So this one requires a vote, right? So is there a motion to approve the, uh, s, school district to switch to a half-day preschool program starting two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, school year?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, any more questions, comments, concerns? All right. All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Carol. After-school program.
Playing tennis tonight.
So the main reason for this one was basically a conversation that we started to have last time, and the realization that we don't really have the after-school program currently. That, you know, proves to be a valuable program for many of our students, and we really cared a lot about it. And there was this program that, you know, we had put together with the collaborative. So we just wanted to understand where we are, what the status is, and when we can bring that program back, or an after-school program back.
So I think the collaborative serves its purpose for the students that are in that program, because it is a five-day-a-week program and it's full care, so...
So we have it, we have it.
So the collaborative is continuing to do that, and that, that works well for the parents that want that. But there are a number of students that used to enjoy the after-school clubs that met once a week or twice a week. And, you know, then they came and they stayed just for that hour. The parents came and they picked them up, and that was the sewing clubs or the cooking clubs. And the teachers offered to some of those clubs and community... And the teachers offered um to some of those clubs and community members came in and were cored, of course, and, and, and whatnot, but they offer, they, they taught as well. So, our hope is to get that part of the program back so that we can do that and, and I think it just offers that other piece of the community where, where, you know, the feeling of community in the school and the kids have something to look forward to staying after school. And that's where we can incorporate STEM and STEAM and, you know, um, the art teacher's been great about doing the art club all along, no matter what. A couple of the teachers have done a Peace Builder Club and there's been students that stayed for the library and things like that. But this would formalize it, so, so what we're asking for is, is a position to be put into the budget for the coordinator of that, a stipend position to come back. And, and at one point, there were stipends that were removed for different clubs and activities and things. So, we're just looking for that one position to be stipend and that would be the coordinator of the after-school activities program. And then that person would be the one to um offer, you know, put the finals together of what's being offered, what's not being offered, um, and to decide what the, the amounts would be for club and activity and uh figure the, the cost out for that and then just be the keeper of it and the coordinator of it and be able to get it rolling again. So, probably nothing that can be done for this year, but we're looking to have that stipend position put into the budget for next year so that that person can start right away and not be reliant on getting the program going in order to have the stipend, to have that coordinator to be able to get the program going.
And when you say stipend position, is, it would be someone from within the school district who will receive a stipend to coordinate that program? What is the expected cost of that?
So, are you saying that, that it won't be offered in two thousand nineteen?
It will be offered in nineteen, the fall of nineteen.
Okay.
So, not the end of this year.
Right.
Because we typically see it trail off come the nicer weather with sports and things anyway. So, it's more of a, probably a fall and winter and early spring sort of thing. You maybe have three sessions.
Yeah.
We could do throughout the year. And um, the stipend was paid for before out of the dues that, that people paid for.
Right, so that's what I was gonna ask. The collaborative program was based on a revolving fund, right? Just they, folks pay into it and then we pay out of it, uh the cost of it. Would this be something similar to that?
Except for the coordinated position, which would be the stipend position.
Okay, so the stipend has to be within the budget.
Right.
When we're talking about the collaborative, is that the SOAR?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's still being offered?
Yes.
And then these clubs were, they always seemed like they were part of SOAR before.
They do-
They came home on the, the same sheet, like you could sign up for your things on the SOAR sheet.
If your child was already in SOAR.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's how that works. So, and they might do Legos on Monday and cooking on Tuesdays and this on Wednesdays, but it was all for the students that were already part of the SOAR.
All right.
And in that program.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, no, that works out well for those students.
Well, and I think, you know, part of the discussion uh I've been having uh with some community members is there's not a strong park and rec um program. And so, what are the ways that the school can collaborate and offer um some things that maybe would come from a park and rec program, um, not only during the school year, but um as we move into some vacation time or some summertime? So, the long-term vision is, is to work with the town around collaborating uh with park, parks. I'm gonna say parks and recs, um, but park and recreation.
Just out of curiosity, how many uh students participate in the collaborative in the, in the SOAR?
It varies. I think their goal is to keep it around twenty, to make it cost-effective.
At a minimum of twenty or is it, we can't do more than twenty?
No, no, like at a minimum. Twenty is like what they need to make it work. Um, and I think sometimes it's a little higher, sometimes it's a little lower there too. Depends on, on the time of year maybe and, and whatnot. But um, for the most part, there's, there, you know, there's the, a, a pretty good amount. We, and we still do have a lot of students going to Children's First.
Hmm.
Um, we have, we have two buses that, that, you know, are, are pretty full going down to Children's First every day after school.
And they come in from?
And they come in from Children's First in the morning.
So, that is actually, you had a question, right?
I did, I just wanted to, so, um, would this create an issue with CES if we were to have a club that kind of did the same thing that they did or would that be okay?
I, I think it was left open in the, in, when CES came on board that this was a possibility. And the idea ideally was before my, before I got here was to see if they could fill that void, but they're not able to fill like that daily piece of it from our conversations with them that they need more of a structure where they can pay an employee every day and that sort of thing and that, that once a week sort of for an hour.
I just wanna make sure that that wasn't a great issue with.
Can I jump in here? The SOAR program is more of an after-school daycare with activities. The um program that Mr. Latoy is talking about, and I can speak about it because I was one of the people who did a sewing class. And it is so well-received. I said I could do ten kids, first through third grade. There were so many kids that applied and I had to do two classes. And it was sewing, it was learning how to sew on a button, you, you know, uh sewing a seam to make a beanbag. Simple things like that, but things the kids don't do every day. And I do know that a bunch of the teachers have been talking about a study club as one of these after-school programs where somebody could go and get their homework done. And they're not for two or three or, you know, more hours, it's an hour. It is an hour. And you give the coordinator, you know, you get your supply, you say, well, it's gonna cost me five bucks a kid. And that's what they charge. And what I got paid was out of the money they collected. So, you know, it is, it, it's an awesome thing.
No, I thought, and I thought it was great, I just wanna make sure we weren't gonna create an issue if we did, you know, something that the SOAR was doing and they said, hey, well, you stole our kids, you know?
Well, yeah, 'cause it does feel, you know, this is when we were talking about it two years ago or three years ago. You know, it, it still felt like there was a lot of overlap between, I don't, what was this program called?
ASAP.
Yes, I mean, yeah, that's, I remember my kids doing, doing that and, you know, then there's Children's First, you have the collaborative. So, I guess I'm confused about the distinctions among these.
I, I just, uh, from the feedback I've gotten from parents is that there's still a lot of parents out there who are just looking, that, that their, their children, they're looking for a, a club or an activity or something for them to stay once a week, you know, aside from all this. So, it's not the parents who are sending their students to Children's First. It's not the parents who are sending their kids to the collaborative right now. It's the parents, you know, who, they pick their kids up every day or their kids take the bus home every day, but they'd like something, you know, a chance for them to be able to stay and-
More of an enrichment.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Through ASAP where you do eight weeks of-
And it is in sports. I mean, it might be because there were people who did um kickball.
Right, right.
But it's not all about sports.
No, it was all fun stuff.
It was.
Yeah.
But also educational too, if you're talking about STEM, STEAM and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, study, um,
Study club.
Study club. Those kinda uh complement what we're trying to do to find enrichment opportunities along the same lines as, you know, those technology and everything else that we're introducing. So, it's a good thing. I guess my, my concern is, uh, and, and, you know, you brought another interesting point. My primary concern is whether or not these programs kinda um take away from each other. And then, you know, you're, then you're left with a program that cannot be sustained because collaborative is gonna say, you know, we don't have twenty and we don't really wanna offer it and then we're gonna, we're not gonna have something that they may find valuable on the other side and then we're gonna kinda uh, uh, cause some stir unnecessarily. So, based on your example, I'm understanding, or at least that unique example that you shared, there are certain things that um folks find valuable, the students find valuable, and they don't necessarily have to really compete with what's being offered through the collaborative program.
And you have to remember that this program that Mr. Latoy is proposing is probably about an hour. A lot of the children who go to SOAR are there for more than an hour, two, however long, um, till their parents pick them up. What they would do is go to this program, do their little class, and then finish their day, day there.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm sure that they still have to pay to hold that slot. And maybe it's one day a week where the other four, they're still going there.
Or maybe they're just being picked up right after this, this, so, yeah, I mean, I, I see a spot, I just wanna make sure that it wasn't gonna create an issue.
Yes.
And then, but the kids that would go to Children's First, you're talking about two, two buses of kids at Children's First, you're essentially eliminating them from being able to partake in that because there's not a late, a late bus. So, if they're going to act, if they're going to Children's First for after-school care, that means there's not someone there to be able to provide a ride, so.
Maybe there's the one day a week that they can do one of those classes and do have transportation. So, there's two sides to it.
And I don't wanna speak for Children's First, but I know that since they renovated and added on and whatnot, it's a beautiful setup where they have like their own Lego room.
They have ridiculous amounts of stuff.
Like, the, the, all these other things going on all the time. So, those kid, those students actually are probably, you know, getting more of this than the students who aren't going there.
And I, and I think it's three, if we can keep it at three very distinct programs for three very different uh sets of needs. You know, people sending their kids to Children's First, they need them there for, you know, a few hours. Um, so, that's, that sounds like a lot of logistical work to say, well, geez, I would love for my kid to stay here for an hour and then, yeah, how do I get him over there? But as long as it's three separate programs and, you know, there's no overlap.
And I think, you know, this is, this is a great program and, and, you know, it, it offers, but as we're talking about sustaining our budget and Cheryl and I have talked a lot about integrating drama and more music and more STEAM and STEM into the school day so that, you know, that's something down the road as, as we look at our budget and we can say, this is, this is, that's where we wanna be. We wanna be that all these students are, are, are able to partake in that during the school day and that there's blocks and pieces of that within there. You know, so it's great that we can start off this way and we can have that extracurricular piece of it. But like you said, you know, it's definitely three distinct groups. There's, there's the people who have the, the after-school program here, they need that, you know, and that's where, that's their childcare every day. And there's the folks at Children's First who, it's before school and after school for a lot of them. You know, they get dropped off there and, you know, and, and then they come here. And so, I, I believe it'll work. There's been a lot of positive um talk. The teachers have, have uh talked about doing it. I have a teacher who's willing to even step up and coordinate it, um, you know. So, we've done a lot of the groundwork already.
So, in terms of age group, this is open to all ages?
Um, originally, it was just East Meadow, it was just four, five, six. We've talked about possibly, 'cause don't forget, if, if it's gonna be after-school and, and pickup and care like that, we might be conservative at first and say like, let's try it. You know, I don't, I don't know. One of the things we talked about was, I think, two through six to start with and see how that went.
You're talking about grades?
Grades.
The reason why I'm asking, uh, aren't the students going to Children's First, young students? Do they have all ages or is it?
They go care up to age fourteen.
Oh, they do?
Okay, so I- Not that they have that, but there's, there's kids that can go, that still go there in sixth grade if the, you know, the parent doesn't get home until late at night.
Oh, okay, all right.
They, they have care until six.
Yeah, there's still a lot of people, I mean, I'd say third grade is a big grade for them and I, I still see some fourth and fifth and maybe even a few sixth graders there.
One of the things we talked about too, that's an awful long day for kindergarten or first grader and to stay after school. By the end of the day, a lot of those kids are waiting to see mom and dad and move along and things like that, you know? So, and we can look at that as, as time goes on, you know? If we find that there's a calling for that, we definitely would have people that would be willing to do it. But I think it would just be conservative at first and, and we'd wanna just see what we can get going and what the interest is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be interested to, to find out, uh, you know, next year, like, what, you know, what, what was offered and, you know, what the, what was offered and what was taken, you know, just how it went, I guess.
Lot of other districts do it and we've received some information from teachers who live in other districts and they've brought the information in from, from the programs their children are in to help us get going with what's popular and what's, what's really trending out there.
And will, will a conversation be had with the collaborative?
Yeah.
It makes sense to, to just, you know, have, have some good conversation around it. Just explain intentions, the program, just so everybody's on the same page and, and they understand the differences in the program.
Yeah, but we, we were talking um at length last year and trying to help them boost their enrollment and what we could do. And we did a lot of internal advertising for them and a lot of pushing at the end of the year last year, I think, to get them over the hump to where they were sustainable again, um, because they were concerned about that. So, we can definitely have those conversations and go from there.
Because it seems like at the end of the day, y'all want the same thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
We all wanna make sure that we have enriching programs, meeting as many student, students' needs as possible. And we don't wanna feel like, uh, anybody's competing or, yeah, exactly. So, it makes sense to have open communication from the start.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and like I said, we've, we've had some great conversations with them. You know, not so much this year now that we've been here and their program's doing a lot better, but last year when they were really trying to build that up, we worked with, uh, them a lot.
So, going back to the uh earlier question, what, what does that mean in terms of budget?
I, I think it's minimal. I think we're talking somewhere between six and twelve hundred dollars for the coordinator um of the program.
Right, and the program is, it's only a few months each semester, is that how it works?
It's like eight-week sessions. You'd have like a six or an eight-week session. So, you'd have, and then take a break and then have another six or eight-week session and then do, do it again.
Do they have to sign up for each individual session or it's like you just sign up and you're in every session that's-
No, sign up for each session and it gives students more of a chance to get into some of those other things maybe that they, they wanted to, so they can sign up for three different things or they can just take one session and-
Gotcha.
Okay. So, uh, you had a question? So, I don't know whether this is two votes or one. One is to recreate, I guess, reopen the program. Um, the second one is related to the budget impact of it. Is that, is that correct? Or can we do it in one motion?
I think you can do it in one.
Yeah.
Create and fund.
Especially Adam needs to answer that question. He, he seemed completely shocked. Yes, I mean, it's in the budget, so.
It's already in the budget?
Yeah.
Proposed.
Proposed. Proposed budget, yes.
Oh, this is a no-brainer then.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to approve the uh restart of our after-school program for East Meadow School? Uh, let's start with that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, any more questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, with the estimated impact of six to twelve hundred dollars, you said, for a coordinator position to administer the after-school program at East Meadow, uh, is there a motion to create that position?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Bill.
So, before school and after? Talk about your preschool and after.
Yes, we covered both sides. Although they, they meant different things.
Yes.
Um, in old business, we don't have anything, although something says vote, is it just a leftover?
It's a leftover.
Okay, all right. Um, upcoming business, we have superintendent's evaluation. How would you like to initiate that? Typically, you know, we see something from you that says these are uh goals, achievements and all that. And we then have to decide what process we're gonna be following because we really are not really uh fans, fans of the state-created process. It's not really lending itself to good conversations. Uh, even the um, the feedback that results from it uh is not really something that helps us or probably you. Uh, so we wanna find something different. I don't know what that different thing is yet, if you have any suggestions, if you, if there are models that you would like to share.
Yeah.
Uh, if not, we will put, we will create a framework as our guardrails and then we'll keep our conversations around those. But the key ingredient that will drive that conversation will be uh your, your self-assessment that you're gonna share with us and, you know, your targets and how they were um achieved or if there are any gaps, you know, some explanation around that.
Okay.
Fair?
So, I'm hearing then that potentially for the next meeting, you- So I'm hearing then that potentially for the next meeting, you'd want my goals and frame uh targets.
Yep.
And some sort of template, other than the one we're using, if that's possible. If you come across anything and I don't know if we can.
Did a little research, not much out there, but maybe if we went outside Massachusetts. It's a, it is a topic of conversation amongst superintendents, um that there are school committees that are asking, is there a different way?
Yeah.
So, you're not alone.
I think their template is, you know, for some school districts probably, it's good.
Yeah.
But some of the questions that they're asking, some of the things that they are trying to dig into, they're not really relevant to to what we're trying to achieve here, at least not at this point in time, so that's why it's just, it's it's uh distracting us from having a fuller conversation around things that matter, so um I can, I can do some research too, and maybe we can reach out to NASC, they may have some suggestions.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah, so I'll.
Oh, never mind, yeah.
You were gonna volunteer, right?
No, I'm not volunteering for anymore.
Alright.
Uh I was gonna, I'm not so sure, and any school district would find the current framework useful in any way, I find it cumbersome and confusing and and anything that takes me more than four hours to do, I think is just absurd.
So basically, it seems like, and this is my quick thirty-second rant, uh as we sometimes do when they are not relevant or inappropriate, somebody seems to have gone to some business evaluation uh templates and then uh you know, pulled whatever they thought was was good. Uh but, you know, we're not having the same conversations as businesses when we do our evaluations, so. Alright, so we'll do that, we'll find something that is a little more appropriate and we'll be, we'll start with your um with your presentation or with your uh submission at that point at the next, next meeting. Um our standing reports, do you have a?
I do not, I.
You do not, okay.
It was, it was the public hearing, which was well-received, so.
True, true. Um, uh.
No, we're meeting Wednesday, so I won't have it, I'll I'll have one at the next meeting.
Alright, um so related to that, Adam, do you have anything on either one of the budgets? However, tracking on FY nineteen, you mentioned that there, you know.
We're still surplus a lot, now I'll the, the work comes into nineteen, so next meeting, which is the eighth.
Okay.
Yep, I'll, I'll give us updates on everything.
Were you able to look at the email that I sent related to the um food services program?
Yes.
We probably had a
Yes.
Sign confused right there, so it is about six thousand dollars currently, but we're still tracking to be on the plus side
Yes.
By the end of the school year.
Mm-hmm. Then I should get the, I should already have the February numbers, so I'll follow up with them, usually I get them around this time, I should have the February numbers from uh Ken.
Okay.
For our next meeting as well.
I thought there was a takeaway from that, like wasn't there an outstanding?
This was a takeaway that, you know, the number that they shared with us wasn't really matching the numbers that we were coming up with because we had about fifteen hundred dollars or so, something like that.
Yep.
Uh s- um surplus or uh profit year-to-date at the end of December. And they were saying, well, you know, with about a loss of forty-five hundred dollars in January and February, we are at six thousand dollars deficit, but we're, we're looking to make up for that and more. My question was, how can it be because we've seen a, a profit at the end of December, it should be about three thousand dollars or so? Uh then we confirmed that there was a sign uh that was the other way, so that that does make it uh six thousand dollars.
In the hole.
In the hole, uh.
So that fifteen hundred dollar pro- uh profit was actually neg- is in the balance.
It was, it was a, it was a deficit at that time too, which makes sense with the narrative that they shared with us because they were saying that towards the end of the year due to a few factors, they were seeing some decline, but as, you know, uh we get into spring, that, you know, they're expecting more uh lunches and breakfast, so.
So, um, I could provide a better update, um or more in-depth update next time, but there is a I think it's either state or federal, there's guidelines as to what the average price per meal should be. Um and ours happens to be three cents below that average price per meal. Um so Ken and I are working on restructuring our uh price per meal, increasing it to get either at or above that average, which then.
And that average is the average of is it uh similar school districts or our, our neighborhood?
Yeah, so, so tha- that aver- so, again, I, and I haven't done too much work on it, but I think it's a federal average and I think it takes in into account just the average daily meal, what what it should be, they just, they just stipulate what it should be and we're three cents below that average.
Okay.
So we're gonna work on um increasing the the prices and obviously generate more revenue.
Two, uh, two things and I hope it's not, not, not wrong, but um one is, do, uh can we find out if the, so we're allowing them to do, uh you know, lunches on half-days?
They're doing bag lunches.
Right, what kind of an impact that's had on this year? Kinda like to understand if if that, if that really helped them, and number two, um one of the things I noticed the last two times, we had multiple half-days. I don't think they're helping themselves because they're offering the same bag lunch two days in a row.
Oh.
I do know, um because I s- I've seen the papers that my opponent are coming back, um I think there's a ham, there's a choice.
Yeah, but even when you do like the fun lunch, it's really just like a yogurt and a
Cereal.
Cereal, it's like, you you can't sustain a kid.
Sandwich in one, in one of the things.
Yeah, but 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 it's the same sandwich both days in a row is my point, it's like maybe if you booked that up.
So I think one day is the sandwich and one day is like the fun lunch that you speak of.
Okay.
It's two different ones.
I might be misreading.
I read the form, the way you did is, on day one, your choice is you can have the ham sandwich and the fun lunch and on day two, you can have the ham sandwich or the fun lunch, so you could choose, but if your kid.
But it's the same two choices.
Yeah, either, so it would, you know, like I know some of the lunches that my daughter goes after, it's like, you know, the the fun lunch and then um there was like the cold nachos or whatever, so if you could have the cold nachos and the sandwich or the cold nacho, like something so that it's not you know, they mix it up.
Said, which I probably misunderstood, I thought the ham sandwich was one day and the other.
That's the way I read the form, is that, you know, that, so.
Feedback.
I don't know if that, um you know, I didn't really study it, I was just like, oh, this is, this is cool, if I wanted to do it.
Okay, so we're gonna have that next time?
Yes, okay.
Yep. Uh are we still polling the students to see how they like the lunches and all that stuff? Cause we used to do that.
That was at the high school level.
Right, yeah.
Not as far as I know.
Okay.
I think it might be beneficial.
I think it might be beneficial too.
Cause I'll tell you, the feedback from the kids that I'm hearing, they don't, they don't love it.
So we've had a change in cooks, right, so I know that that is probably a huge um
Yeah.
Factor in that, um I'll, I'll email Steve now and say.
You gotta learn more recipes, so.
Yeah.
You don't want me in that kitchen.
Alright, so if we can find that out, I think that would be great to have direct uh feedback from.
Do we know how that survey was administered in the past or?
No, Ken may know.
I think it was online.
I know Eva was asked once in seventh grade, I think, and I don't know if it was online, it may have been I feel like it was almost like a paper ballot outside of the lunch, but I don't, I don't remember, I could ask her, but she just.
I can find out, I mean, you you know, we can, it doesn't have to be the same thing as it was in those years, but I recall that it was probably online and there may have been a paper version because not everybody has access to the internet, we can find out what it is and you know, then ask them, uh I can't imagine that anyone's running a business these days without really, you know, asking whether the consumer likes it or not.
I just sent a email.
It's actually surprising that we're even having to ask about it.
And they could be, and they just aren't sharing with us and they're just designing their menus based on information they're getting.
Yeah.
So I don't know the answer, so we'll ask.
Yeah, I wouldn't assume one way or the other, I just, I'm not aware of it, so I will.
Alright, that would be great, we can find out.
Yep.
Awesome. Uh, do we have anything from the collaborative?
Meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, we're meeting Wednesday.
Oh, yes.
Oh, is that what you said? I'm, I'm, I'm really tired, just uh, you know, it's.
You don't say.
Yeah, to the point, to the point that my eyes are burning. Um, we don't have any uh school building committee meeting, uh policy subcommittee, Jen, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, how are we, I I mean, now we're almost April, so we really want to finish that last large section, is there any way we can, we can help uh maybe to push that through and be done with that?
I will reach out, it's just a matter of going through them.
Right.
We'll just, okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you, uh budget, you said we don't have anything, um community relations, anything new? Okay, so we're all done with our um standing reports, I think we have a quick um executive session. Uh and is there anything else that we want to include in our next agenda that you can think of?
Not that I can think of right now.
Okay. So if you can think of anything, please uh either email me or 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 Cheryl, it'll be better, then we can include it in the next agenda. With that, we're gonna vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. Part A three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, the committee will not return to open session, Kathy, can we ask you for a roll call?
Uh Ms. Bartels?
Aye.
Mr. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Pam Bukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Irvin?
Aye. Alright, thank you all, have a good evening.